All right, welcome, welcome, welcome. We're gonna have to start holding these meetings on rainy days because this is bigger crowd than we've had in a while. Let's see you all here. We are the Middle Peninsula League of Voters. I'm the chairman, Katie Thompson, and I want to tell you about us a little bit. We're a non-person organization, and it is our job to empower voters by having these forums, getting information out to the voters. Today, we're going to start with the school board at two, and three, we'll have the Board of Supervisors candidates. I'm going to let you introduce these people, but I want to make sure you understand, this is not a debate. These people are not going to talk to each other, they're going to talk to you. This is like they're being hired for a job. You are human resources. You're the ones that decide whether or not to get hired. So, I hope you will ask a lot of questions, get a lot of information, and with that, I'm going to give you over to our voter services chair, Nadine Tatum, who will introduce our candidates and tell you about our rules and introduce our moderator.
I'm gonna let our moderator introduce our candidates. Good afternoon, everybody. Glad to see such a good turnout on a not very nice afternoon. I'm glad to see the interest. We have been doing these candidate forums, I believe, in every election cycle since 2007. And sometimes the attendance has been good, sometimes it's been not so good, but we're glad that you are civic-minded. We are a civic-minded organization. We're all about voter empowerment and encouraging civic participation. Some of you may have picked up the guidelines for our forums, the cabinet, I'm gonna run over them very quickly, just so you know how we operate. We have had a rule since the beginning that the candidates must appear in person, and we're all here today, and we don't accept any substitutes. Also, we only accept candidates who have officially filed with the Board of Elections. We have the right of candidacy, and Dan is not here. And you all have been very good about not bringing any campaign material into this meeting space. That can be distributed outside of the meeting space. Each candidate is allowed three minutes for opening remarks, one minute for each response to questions, and two minutes closing. No questions of a personal nature will be permitted. Audience members have been offered cards, lumps to print questions for candidates, and we have quite a few. The cards must bear the questioner's printed name and signature on the back, and they will not be placed in consideration to be asked by the moderator. And if you've got a question, please get it up here to the table by the time I finish reading this. We've got about a minute and a half. Questions will be asked to note on the candidate whom the question is directed, the specific candidate of all candidates, where specific position. Second questions will not be used until all first questions are accepted and used. Questions that are directed to one candidate or all of the candidates. However, questions that are directed to one candidate will also be subject to responses from the rest of the candidates. The moderator, Reese Williams, will take the order of which candidates were selected to be general replies to each question. Each candidate will have an opportunity to respond to each question. If a candidate chooses to pass on a particular question when it is his or her turn, he or she will forfeit that opportunity to respond to the question later. A mid-pen voting committee will screen questions for repetition, clarity, and balance before providing them to the moderator. A mid-pen vote member, Becky Deal, will serve as the timer for the debate. She will hold up a paddle, exposing a yellow side to the candidate when there are 15 seconds left in the candidate's response time, and she'll hold up the red side of the paddle when his or her time is up. If the candidate fails to respond to these signals, she will be interrupted by the moderator and asked to hand the response, in the interest of time, the question process, maybe all the other people will do that. So, at this point, I'd like to introduce our moderator for today. I'm a member based a lot of you. She was a moderator with us two years ago, so she's a veteran. This is Reese Williams, the news director for WXGM FM 99.1. Reese graduated from Gloucester High School and then spent 13 years to San Francisco, so she's bi-coastal now. She returned to Gloucester and began working for WXGM three years ago. She hosts a weekly public affairs program called Focus on the Middle Peninsula, which showcases local charitable, political, and community organizations. Without further ado, I give you Reese Williams, and she is a candidate. Thank you. All the way on the left, Troy Anderson. Next to him is Mrs. Carla Hook. Next to her is Mrs. Anita Parker. And on the right is Troy Charles Records. Mr. Anderson, three minutes for your opening statement to our guests.
Great, thank you. I would like to also thank everyone for coming out today on day seven in my book of a dr. week here in Gloucester, but I'm glad to see such a good turnout and appreciate the active position that you all have taken on politics in Gloucester. As stated, I'm Troy Anderson, I'm a Gloucester native. I was born and raised in the southern end of the county. I've been on the board since December of last year. I was appointed to take the place of a vacancy filled when Dr. Pugh passed away last year. So, I have about almost a year under my belt now. So, just to tell you a little more about myself, growing up, I was the kind of kid who spent the first 18 years of my life trying to get out of Gloucester County. And it only took me about a year on the other side of the water to realize that I had it all wrong, that Gloucester is where I needed to be to start a family, raise a family, and enjoy growing up. So, I started my six-year fight to get back into the county, at the lower end of the county, because I knew I'd probably still work on the other side of the river for a long time. So, in 2007, I came back, and when I got back in 2007, I said, okay, I'm here, now what? So, the first thing I did was fill out a volunteer form for the Gloucester Community Ed Court of Bank, and got running right away. So, the first, I was picked up for an alternate position on the Wetlands Board and the Chesapeake Bay Erosion and Planting Commission, where I spent some time, and then after a few years on that, I was appointed by the supervisors to serve on the planting commission. I really enjoyed my time there, and that's kind of what got me interested in the day-to-day going-ons in Gloucester. So, I was introduced to the educational system early in my life as my mom was a teacher for about 25 years, 17 years of which on Gloucester. So, I've been hearing about the pros and cons of public schools as far back as I can remember. And I currently have three children, two of which are at Abington Elementary School, one in the pre-K program, one in fourth grade, and then I have a little boy who's not old enough to go to school, but provided we don't move, he'll also attend Abington Elementary School. I'm biased, I consider that the best elementary school, only because I spent a lot of time there with my children. But my motivation for seeking appointment to the board last year, and also to run for a special election to stay on the board this year, is a pretty simple motivation. I'm the product of a Gloucester County school system, and I consider the education I got between first grade and 12th grade to be great. It really set me up to be successful as an undergraduate. It ran off Baker College to go on and do well on a master's degree at Christopher Newport University, and set me up for success with employment with the federal government, which I, this is my 10th year. Currently, I'm a furlough employee with the U.S. Department of, excuse me, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And so, today, I hope to hear some great questions from each of you, and I look forward to answering them the best I can. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. My name is Carla Hook. I do thank you all for being here today. I've been on the school board since about July of 2012. I was also appointed, unlike Mr. Anderson, to fill a seat that was vacated at that time. So, I've been on the board a little bit over a year now. I grew up in Gloucester County. I graduated from Gloucester High School in 1988, the University of Virginia in 1992, and the College of William &amp; Mary School of Law in 1995. I spent about five years practicing law up in northern Virginia, and then I escaped, and I made it back down here to live in Gloucester, and I worked in New York County Attorney's Office for five years across the river. I'm now in private practice on my own, focusing exclusively on child welfare law. It was when I was in the county attorney's office in York County that I was, really first got into appreciating my favorite part of the Constitution of Virginia, Virginia, not the United States Constitution, and that is that the supervision of the schools shall be vested in a school board. Your school board is constitutional, and it is constitutional that the supervision of the schools is vested in a local school board. And that makes sense, because the local schools are your schools. And each school in each locality is different, and it really needs to be in touch and in tune with locality, what the values and goals and things of that nature are in each locality. So, school boards have done something that I've appreciated for a long, long time. And it's an exciting time right now to be on a school board, whether it's Gloucester School Board or school boards anywhere around the Commonwealth of Virginia. Specifically focusing on our school board, of course, we're getting ready any day now, if we can get things dried out, to start our new school, Page Middle School. And I hope that's an exciting thing for this community. It's going to be centrally located, it's going to be a beautiful school building, and we need a second middle school now. Those of you that may have watched our last school board meeting, probably saw a long discussion that we all had on the bus rides. And that's just one of the issues that's come up as a result of being down one middle school. So, it's a very exciting time for us right now, and hopefully any day now, the dirt will start turning over for things on the new middle school. And outside of just local issues in education, it's a very exciting time, I guess I should say, not just in the Commonwealth of Virginia, but nationally. High-stakes testing is really becoming under more and more scrutiny lately, both for the impact that it has on schools and the impact it has on students in particular. And again, just at our last board meeting, we passed a resolution asking the General Assembly to kind of reevaluate what we're doing in Virginia with our high-stakes testing. And so, it's an exciting time, there's a lot going on. I think you've got a good board working for you right now, and I think you'll have a good board next year as well, so thank you very much.
Mr. Parker, three minutes. I'm gonna try not to have her hold that up for me. My name is Anita Parker. I actually was hired by the Petsworth District eight years ago, so I have already served on the school board for eight years. My interest became evident to me as, I guess, as a parent of three boys in Gloucester County Schools, 30, well, let's see, my son is 29, and my other son is 26 and 25, and all three of my sons went through Gloucester County Public Schools, and my interest was sparked when I got to work with them through the PTAs and as being a mom that was involved in our children's schooling. I felt, feel like it's very important for all of us to stay involved with our kids throughout their school, even when they can move up into that dreaded middle school and high school. I think it's imperative that we stay involved, and that's what I was determined to do. I did so and got to the point that I really felt like I wanted to do a lot more for not only my children, who were moving on and moving on in their lives, but the children all over Gloucester. So, my goal from the beginning was to do as much as we could do, to provide the best we could possibly provide for our schools and our students in Gloucester County. I feel like that my time that I spend with the PTAs and with parents and with teachers really is the reason that I felt the need to get involved, and I think that has helped me in some ways, because I feel like I have, I come from a different perspective than some other people might have, because I am an involved parent and involved in the school system. And I would like to continue to do that, and I appreciate that no one decided that they thought I was doing that bad a job that I needed to be replaced. So, I appreciate that very much, because I really do want to do a good job in what I do. And I do believe we have a great board that we work with. I'm looking forward to next year. We all bring something different to the table, and I think that's really necessary to have a good board. I think it makes it so that we can all come from different directions and meet in the middle, not always easily sometimes, but that we can meet in the middle and come up with solutions that will be the best for our community and our kids. Thank you.
Mr. Records, three minutes. Yes, my name is Charles Records, and I am the candidate for the at-large seat on the school board, and I'm a newcomer to this process, but I'm certainly extremely excited about it. I've been married for 13 years to my wife, Michaela. We have two boys that are in Gloucester County Public Schools. My son, Shamar, is a seventh grader at Peaslee, and my son, Carter, is a third grader at Petsworth. And I worked, lived, and have grown up in Gloucester. I'm a 1993 Gloucester High School graduate. My background is, I'm a registered professional engineer in both the state of North Carolina and the state of Virginia, and I also partner in a local construction and development company. And I have a bachelor's science in civil engineering from Virginia Tech. And as many of the other folks spoke about, I've been very much involved civically here in Gloucester. I sit on the TC Walker Rosenwald Woodville School Foundation, and I'm the secretary on that board, and I've also been actively coaching Parks Direct basketball with my children. I wanted, and really wanted, motivated me to run for the school board, really, there were several things. I'd like to see us get back to 180-day school year. I have a lot of experience with managing and preparing large budgets in my work, and I think that I can really help out from that standpoint. And I also think that I can offer a lot of ideas on ways to save money on items in our budget to fund even the more important elements of our budget. So, I am extremely excited to be here. I appreciate you all coming here to learn more about us and being able to make informed decisions, because I think that that's the key, is being able to make informed decisions. So, I am certainly glad to be here, and thank you all very much for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Records. All of the questions we've received are actually for all of the candidates, so we'll just select those coming down the road. We'll begin with you, Mr. Anderson. The first question is, what will the school board do with TC Walker's school building? You have one minute for all of your replies.
That building is currently under renovation to make room for the school administration staff. We were essentially evicted from the space they had there in the courthouse, so that's going to be the new home of the staff for the school system, the superintendent and his staff. All the budget financing will all be inside TC Walker Educational System, their center. There's also going to be, I believe, some room for some community organizations, local. We backed up, we did save some space for in there, and also possibly a head start program as that program's flowing, growing across the county.
Thank you. Mrs. Parker?
Mr. Anderson pretty much detailed what the building's going to be used for. I think that one thing you might have left out, we're hoping that the county boards will be able to meet there as well, in the renovated auditorium space, both the school board and the Board of Supervisors. I think that would be, again, a great space for the two boards to meet in. Again, he's set forth what we plan to do with the building. Whenever you talk about TC Walker School, you have to be very mindful of the fact that that is a historic building, it has a lot of sentimental and emotional value for a lot of folks in the community, which it should. And I think the planning process that we've undergone in renovating that building, I think has been very respectful of the community in making sure it reflects Mr. Walker's contribution to our community and contribution to society in general. So, again, I think it's going to be a good space, and I'd encourage everyone, after it's finished, to come out and take a look.
Mrs. Parker?
The only thing that I could add is that I really think that we are going, you're going to find out that it's going to be very useful to the community through community education. They are always looking for space throughout this county to have programs that they own and to utilize our school space, and I think that once we're finished with the renovations, they'll be moving back into some of the spaces in the evenings for adult education and things like that. And I'm hopeful that we can have a lot of community use with that space that we're going to be utilizing for our staff.
Thank you, Mr. Records.
I certainly agree with what everyone mentioned. I think that Troy, I'm not sure if you mentioned the buildings and grounds, I think is also going to have a piece at the back, portion of property for keeping their equipment. But as was mentioned, I think it will be a great site ultimately for community use and for the community to make use of that property as they do in the other facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Records. Our next question will be given here, Mrs. Hook. With all middle school students being moved to Page Middle School since it is using, will all middle school students be moved to Page Middle School since it's using a new teaching model? If not, how will the selection be made?
Did you say, will the students or will the teachers?
Will all the middle school students be moved to Page Middle School since it's using a new teaching model? If not, how will the selection be made?
No, all of our students won't be moved to Page Middle School. Obviously, when Page is completed, we'll be back to two middle schools in the community. We'll have Peaslee, and we'll have Page, and both of them will go back to six through eight. Now, as far as the teaching model, I mean, Page is being designed around project-based learning, so it's a different design than Peaslee is, but both schools are really going to be moving to that project-based learning system, where it's kind of a collaborative process, where students focus on doing projects together rather than just kind of sitting in rows like many of us may remember in the educational system. So, it is going to be, the school, the community will have to be rezoned, so that half our students will be at one school and half of our middle school students at the other school, but both schools will be using this project-based learning system. So, all of our student, middle school students will be able to benefit from that.
Thank you. Mrs. Parker?
I think one thing that I've noticed, that when my shoulder more at Peaslee Middle School, which was quite a few years ago, they also did a lot of collaborative teaching during that period of time. The teachers liked to get together and work with the students in groups, and that's really what we're talking about with this, with this style of teaching, and I think it will work well in both of the schools, whether it be Page or Peaslee. And I think that everyone will benefit from the style of teaching, because I think everyone benefits when you work together. And I think that also goes for our students. I think they work much better together in coming up with their decisions on projects than just working individually. So, I think it's going to be a good system for both schools, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mrs. Parker. Mr. Records, second question.
I would see that the middle school students, when the new Page School is ready to be open, to be rezoned, where half our students will be at Peaslee and half our middle school students will be at Page, and that ultimately, as was mentioned, the project-based learning is an excellent model for learning. I think that creativity and collaborative processes is certainly a good model and something that I was glad to see the school board move forward with earlier this year on making a commitment that our middle schools would be taught in a more collaborative way. So, ultimately, I look forward to seeing the new Page Middle School, the capacity issues no longer being an issue for the county.
Thank you, Mr. Records. Mr. Anderson?
Not much factually I can add to that, but my opinion, I'm excited, and I'm also excited to see that the administration, the school administration, has already been proactive and formed a collaborative learning, kind of a team between both previous Page teachers and Peaslee teachers, who are already working to come together to define what that collaborative learning and project-based learning is going to look like for both middle schools. So, they won't be starting that right before they, but they've already started now, so that means we'll have a hit the ground running in the fall of 2015.
Thank you. The next question is, seems to be sort of supplemental, and we'll start with you, Mrs. Parker. What is your position on the current school board administration and experimentation within the new Page Middle School? I think everyone has sort of supplemented it in a way, but, and so, I think everyone has, I think, has.
Okay, but would you, you know?
What is your position on the current school board administration and experimentation within the new Page Middle School?
Okay, saying that it's the collaborative, project-based learning is what I'm assuming the question means. I think that the school board has done a lot of looking into it ourselves. I think we've done our homework, so to speak, and I believe that the implementation of this new way of teaching, even though I feel like we were already doing that years ago, I think this new way of teaching is going to be beneficial to all of our students. And I'm very pleased that our, as Mr. Anderson said, that we are not just sitting back waiting for this school to open. This is already being done and in the process of being looked into, how we can better provide for our students from day one. And I believe that we're on the right track.
Mr. Records?
Sure, I'd just like to add that while the plans for the new middle school were being rolled out, I was certainly critical of them at several different times, although, and had actually presented before the school board on a couple occasions, and while, and don't necessarily see that, ultimately, I think the new school is going to be a great school, I think, and I think, as to the last question, collaborative learning, I will go on there, is something that we should all be excited about. But I guess ultimately, there are some things with the new school I would have liked to see done a little bit differently, but at the end of the day, we're getting ready to start building it, so I'm excited to see it completed and students happy with it.
Mr. Anderson, would you like to supplement?
Just a little bit, based on what I've learned, asking questions in the last year, when we were talking about the curriculum within Peaslee, project-based learning and collaborative learning has always been a concept of learning there. What Page does differently is, it capitalizes on the new Page, capitalizes on the lessons learned from Peaslee as far as the physical layout of the school. So, at Peaslee, where teachers have wanted to have space to separate students and do more project learning, the space separate from the traditional classroom just isn't there. And that's what the new Page will have, is areas separate from the main classroom, but still visual connectivity between the main classroom and the outside rooms, where suburbs of students can be placed to work on more of that collaborative and project-based learning.
The only thing I would add is, I think the question referred to experimentation with this new style of learning, and I'm not really sure that it's an experiment we're doing, although this may be fairly new to this county. Project-based learning has been in schools all over the country for quite a while now. For example, those of you that are familiar with Jefferson, which is up in northern Virginia and widely considered one of the best schools in the country, I actually have a sister-in-law that went there, they've been using project-based learning for years. So, while it may be new here, it's not a brand-new thing that Gloucester's going to be the first to do. So, there's a lot of research, a lot of resources for folks out there to tap into as we move forward with project-based learning.
Our next question, that will be given to you, Mr. Records. Common Core Education Standards. Polls show that nearly 60% of people do not know what this initiative is. Please tell me how you feel about this and the proposed use in our schools.
Sorry, can you repeat that one more time?
Common Core Education Standards. Polls show that nearly 60% of people do not know what this initiative is. Please tell me how you feel about this and the proposed use in our schools.
Well, actually, Common Core was, is from the federal government, and basically, I personally believe that the federal government shouldn't be involved with our education system. I think that Common Core was accepted by 47 of our four states, and Virginia actually did not accept Common Core. They have basically some components of, I think, what's called Common Core, but ultimately, I think that Common Course is something that we do not really need to move down the road and frankly, accept it as a type of teaching style that we should subscribe to.
I don't really have anything to add, and we're having enough troubles in Virginia with the pressures of the standard of learning and the high-stakes testing that we all hear about, where I don't feel that moving to the Common Core is the right answer at this time. The decision from Virginia not to adopt that was the right one.
I'm delighted someone asked this question, so kudos to whoever wrote it down. I oppose implementation of Common Core in Virginia. I don't think it's right for Virginia. I don't think the standards are as high as our SOL standards are. That's my first problem with them. And there's lots of other issues. For example, Common Core places a bigger emphasis on informational text rather than classic text, and I think that classic texts, and literature-wise, are much more valuable on the whole than informational text. And again, the math standards, I don't believe are as good as our SOL standards are. I think it actually might be up to about five states now, because a couple of states that have implemented have now backed out again, so it's about 45 states that adopted the Common Core. Virginia is one that has. Virginia is one that has not. So I don't think we need Common Core. Again, I think it's too intrusive into local control of your schools.
Mrs. Parker?
I totally agree. I think that when we first looked at it, I think all of us were a little frightened as to what our state was going to do to us. I was glad to see that we did not go in that direction. And I agree with Ms. Hook that our SOLs that we are having to deal with right now are much above what I saw when I was looking at the Common Core. So I think we're on the right track with standing right where we're at.
Thank you.
Oh, folks, there's a couple of seats here in front of the black box seat.
Where?
Right behind the little black box right top.
In the center.
Yes. Okay.
We're going to accommodate for you. We're beginning with you, Mr. Anderson. This is the Emerald School Board of Supervisors. Given that school board elections do not provide multiple candidates to encourage competition, would you agree that it would be better for the Board of Supervisors to appoint a school board since their election is the product of competition? If not, why not?
I've, I have friends up in the northern part of the state who actually do have appointed school boards. And after some conversation with them since last year, my answer is no. I think leaving it as an elected is okay. And that's because while school board elections are nonpartisan elections, it's still free for, to have competition within the election. You know, the process is the same. So I'm, I'm in favor of just leaving it as is.
Thank you.
I agree as well. I mean, that is a really interesting question. Of course, up until the mid-'90s or something, something like that, Gloucester school boards were appointed. There are still many in the state that are appointed as well. Not everyone is elected. But I go back to my favorite part of the Constitution, which is the supervision of the school shall be vested in a school board. And I think given how important the school board is, how, how big our budgets are now, I think it's important for us to be as close to the people as possible. And I think that means being elected. Of course, we still have this interesting tug where, of course, the fiscal purse is controlled by the Board of Supervisors and then, and then the, the school board takes that budget and spends it. But I think on the whole, it works out well. I, I think in the end, usually the two boards can come together, establish a good working relationship and, and do what's best for the citizens. So I'm in favor of keeping it elected as well.
Thank you. Mrs. Parker?
Yes, I think as a constituent, as I was before I actually became a school board member, I would have found it very hard to think about not being able to vote for that person that I felt like was important to run our schools and to help our students and provide those things that I wanted as a parent of my students in school. And I think that having the ability for you all to go out to the polls and vote, just like you would for the supervisors, make you a part of that decision, make you a part of hopefully the, the right answers as to what you want to see in our school system. And I would, I would really be upset, I think, that if we had gone back, go back to the other way because I think it's vital that we all take part in what we're doing. And we can do that because we have elected boards on both sides of the fence.
Thank you. Mr. Records?
I'd like to, my, my position on this is that I really do think that, that we should have an elected school board. As, as Ms. Hook mentioned, you know, the Virginia State Constitution sets forth that, that our schools shall be managed and overseen by a school board. And I, you know, I am warm surprise that more people didn't run for these school boards. I think, I think that ultimately, competition is good and I think that ultimately allows the voters to, to pick the best candidate. And, and I think that ultimately, yes, that we, that there should be an elected school board.
Thank you. Our next question, I believe we're beginning with you. Is there any plan to implement a child-centered bus plan so adolescents can attend later than elementary school children?
Child-centered bus plan, so what?
So adolescents can attend later than elementary students.
That's a great question. We've been, we've been talking about this quite a bit over the past couple of months. There are studies that show that older children, our, our high school kids, their bodies are wired differently. They're on a late-to-bed, late-to-rise schedule, whereas your younger kids, their bodies are wired so that it's early-to-bed, early-to-rise. And those of you with children probably have seen that in your homes. Your younger kids, they want to get up at the crack of dawn and you kind of want to stay in bed, whereas your adolescents, you kind of have to drag them out of bed. And that's, it's, it's interesting. In different places, I know I have relatives down in Georgia, they do it exactly the opposite from what we do. There are high school kids going later, the elementary school kids go in earlier. The idea that your bodies are just wired to perform better. I, I think that is a discussion we need to have over the next couple of years to see if, what, if the system we have now is benefiting our students or if we could change that around and, and kind of switch up when everyone's reporting to school so that performance might be better. So I definitely, that's a great question. I think it's one that we should continue to talk about over the next couple of years.
Thank you.
I think this was, this has just come up again, but years ago, this was a topic of conversation on the board that we had previously. Dr. Jean Fu was one of the proponents that really wanted to see us make that change over, to have students, the older students coming in later. I actually was able to go to school at 9:05 when I was going to school. And that, that was really nice as a teenager, not wanting to get up in the morning. So I do believe that the, the clocks are backwards with middle schoolers, high schoolers, and elementary students. And I think that we probably do them a disservice by our times. But we also, if I remember correctly, we did a survey at that time that went out to some parents throughout the district, and we had a lot of pushback. And a lot of the pushback comes from parents that actually utilize their older kids to babysit for the younger kids. So it's something I would like to see. I just don't know if the community will go along with it.
Mr. Records?
I think that's something that we should explore. I'm certainly open to the idea, and I think that it, that we should be open to not only looking at the length of the school day, but the, the length of the school year as well. So I think that, that is a very interesting question, and I think it's something that I'm certainly inclined to consider.
Mr. Anderson?
Definitely a, a topic that we have discussed some and will further discuss, but Ms. Parker hit the nail on the head there. What's critical about coming to the decision on this one is making sure there's a lot of input from the parents because the impacts are not just to the school system itself, but to the parents and the way they've become accustomed to running their lives around jobs and other children in the household. So yes, definitely something we'll hopefully continue to discuss.
Our seventh to the last question, again, for all candidates. We'll start with you, Mrs. Parker. What do you plan to do to improve the education of our youth?
What do I plan to do? Okay.
Is that a broad question?
I'm going to go to my wish list then, since I have the availability to do so. If I could do the one thing in this community that, and money was not an issue, I've got to throw that out there first. I would have more vocational classes provided for our students at Gloucester High School. I came upon this board eight years ago and was pushing at that time and talking to people on a daily basis about the need of having more vocational classes. Unfortunately, that's also around the same time we were being hit with all the budget issues were hitting us really hard, and we ended up having to backtrack on some of that. So if I have what I really would want to see for this community and our students, it would be to provide more vocational classes in our high school setting so that they could be better prepared to go out into the workforce when they leave.
Thank you, Mr. Records.
Well, I agree totally with what Ms. Parker said about our vocational training in our public school system. Although there's a few other things that I would like to, to mention, and those, I guess, that would be my wish list, and that, that would be that ultimately, I think, for the best learning experience, we have to figure out, and the administration of the school system needs to figure out how to best optimize the use of teachers' time. A lot of it has to do with SOL testing requirements of it, but ultimately, we need to minimize or eliminate unneeded and mundane tasks that, that teachers have to deal with so that they can spend their time teaching as efficiently as they possibly can. And I also think that we should, we, the school board should create a strategic plan that has a three- to five-year window that provides, sets metrics for achieving goals and then seeing what we can do.
I got it for you. Thank you.
I agree 100% with both Ms. Parker and Mr. Records, but I'm going to take a slightly broader approach and I'm going to continue to work hard to make sure that the school system, school system of Gloucester attracts good teachers and educators because the success of a school is based purely on the people who have chosen to educate there. So making sure that policies are in line with surrounding communities. We can't always be in line with pay, but we can make our benefits package competitive and make sure that we're drawing the educators that have the skills, abilities, and, and to teach these. So mine's a little bit broader, but those are all great.
The only thing I would add, again, all great answers as well, is I have a particular interest in curriculum issues, and I really think that a rising tide lifts all boats. And I think if we have a demanding curriculum for everyone, then I think everyone will, will benefit from that. We need to work on our math scores, particularly at the secondary level. So I'd like to really see us focusing particularly on math at the secondary level. I'd like to see more of our students pursuing and achieving advanced placement diplomas, advanced diplomas, and more of our students taking and passing our advanced placement tests. And so I think, I think that dovetails with Mr. Records' idea of a strategic plan, kind of putting in a strategic plan for the school division. How many kids we'd like getting those advanced diplomas over the next three to five years? How many children we'd like to see taking and passing those advanced placement tests over the next three to five years? So that's what I would propose.
And our final question. Based on the declining population of school-age youth, what schools would you recommend closing?
That's an interesting question. I have followed declining population statistics in our county for quite some time, given the work that I do, as well as the interest of my children going to public schools. And I, I think that while we have seen a declining population in our schools, we've seen increasing population in our county, which is an interesting, an interesting correlation. But ultimately, I don't foresee us closing any schools anytime in the near future. And, and so the last part of the question, I would say that we, we, I don't foresee us closing any schools in the near future.
Thank you.
Right. This, this year, by the numbers projected, we're supposed to see fewer number of children in our schools than we're actually seeing, the same if not more, I think, in total. So I think in the next few years, you wouldn't see closing any, but possible redistricting to ensure that the class sizes are back smaller to, to a smaller teacher ratio.
Mrs. Hook?
Yeah, the answer's none. I mean, given, given how our elementary schools are, are spread out over the county and the way the numbers are, I can't imagine that happening anytime in, in the near future. Right now, and one of the things we did this year was add a few teachers to some of our schools to kind of keep our class sizes down. And, you know, again, the, we would have to lose hundreds upon hundreds of students before we could even conceivably look at closing a school. So I, I don't think that's going to happen maybe even in my opinion, so.
I agree. There's, there's no, no way that I could see that we would close another school. I, for one, don't want to plan to close another school. TC Walker was about as hard as I want to deal with. That was really tough to do to begin with. So I would, I would say that I think our numbers are going to continue to go up as well. I think we're going to see growth and expansion in our community. I've said all along that I call it Aziz. People from over in Afghanistan and everywhere else that are military, they're going to see that Gloucester County is a good place to settle. And I think we're going to see our housing and everything kind of, kind of broaden, and we're going to see more children in our school system. So I absolutely do not see any that we would have any reason to close another school.
Thank you. We can begin our closing statements. Each candidate has two minutes. We have our paddles ready. We'll begin with you, Mr. Records.
Well, thank you all very much for the invitation to be here today. I greatly appreciate it, and I hope that I, I really would like to see our students within this community performing at their full potential. And that's something that, as a school board member, I think finding the best program and creating the best policy that allows that to occur is extremely important. I'd like to see our county continue improving to the point where we're considered one of the best school systems in the state. And ultimately, as I mentioned, I'm a professional engineer. When I take, when I, I received my license as an engineer about 10 years ago, a little over 10 years ago, and I took an oath to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. And, and I think public service is, is an excellent extension of that, and certainly look forward to it in school board. So thank you, Dan, all for coming out here today, listening to what we have to say. And thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, would you like to say anything?
Again, thanks for pointing out some very well-thought-out and interesting questions that I enjoyed answering, many of which got me thinking some other things in my head that I need to think more about. If you're from the Gloucester Point District, I really appreciated your vote in November. Although I'm running unopposed, your vote tells me that you have the faith in me that I can continue on the board for another two years and do good things. I think we're in a good place in Gloucester. I've really learned a lot in the short one year that I've been there. The board, the sitting board took me in, not as an outsider, taught me the ropes very, very quickly, and the same goes true for the administration. So I would really like to take what I've learned in the first year and continue on for another, for another two years. And I don't have anything else. Thanks.
This is a closing statement.
Yes, thank you. Like everyone else has said, thank you very much for coming out and for your questions today. I did want to actually talk a little bit about the board rather than myself and my closing statements. And again, to reiterate that I think you have a very good board right now, and you have a very responsive board. We get phone calls and emails all the time, and we listen to what the community has to say. And so if you haven't taken the time to email or call or anything like that, please do because it's helpful to us. We appreciate it, and, and we take it into consideration as we work. The board that you have now, and Mr. Records, I believe, will be an outstanding addition to that board. We've, we disagree a lot. We have a lot of give and take on what we think, but we've developed a, a good ability to laugh not only with each other, but at each other as well, which is always something that, that I think a board needs to be able to do when you're working together. So again, I'm, I'm from the York District, if I didn't say that before. And if we have any time before the Board of Supervisors takes the stage up here, please, you know, approach me, no matter what district you're in. If you have further questions you want to follow up on, please do. Thank you very much.
And then closing statements, Mr. Parker.
I just would like to say also that I appreciate each and every one of you that took time on this awful day to come out and, and listen to what we have to say and ask the questions you feel like are important, that you want to know. And I think that I agree with the other board members. We have a good group of people that are really have the same ideas in mind for the best of the children in Gloucester County. And I believe that we work hard. I think that we do that on a daily basis. You have no idea how much reading we all do, and not only the meetings that we attend, but we try to keep up with everything that's out there. We have a phenomenal lady that's in the administrative office that keeps us well-informed with probably 50 or 60 emails a day that we can read. And it's real important to me as a, as a school board member from the Pottsworth District to stay informed, and I want to stay informed for the people that took me in this position. And thank you very much.
Thank you, candidate.
Thank you very much. This is the end of our school board portion of our forum today. If you all will vacate those seats, I need some help getting some chairs.